Call to order the Planning Commission for meeting for July 20, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harlecker, would you take the roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Steiner.
Here.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heickel.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
And Vice Chair Stevenson.
Here.
Just to note, Vice Chair Stevenson will be chairing tonight's meeting in the absence of Chair Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our June 15 meeting. Commission?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the minutes from June 15.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first two items on the agenda tonight, we will take together. They are Planning Case 17-15, preliminary plat for Riverdale Commons, 6th Edition, 3550 124th Avenue, Amcon, and Planning Case 17-16, site plan for two retail buildings, 3550 124th Avenue, Amcon. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Commissioner. The Commissions, with the... Point up. These two applications really go together. The preliminary plat is to take an existing 13.3 acre parcel and split it into three lots. Those three lots would accommodate the existing Home Depot building and the two proposed retail buildings that are included in the associated site plan. With the preliminary plat, Lot 1 is 11.1 acres, and that will include the existing Home Depot store. Lot 2 is 1.25 acres and will include one of the retail stores. And Lot 3 is .93 acres, and that's the other commercial building. Lots do comply with the dimensional and area requirements of the general commercial district. And with respect to this application, it's really tied in with the two retail buildings. And staff is recommending that the public hearing be continued to the August 17 meeting and action on this item be postponed to the same date. The reason for the postponement on this and the next item is the city is waiting for the results of a traffic study that was assessing the impact of the project on the intersection of, I believe it's Riverdale Boulevard and 124th. And once we get that study back, we'll be able to assess the project's impact on that intersection.
Are there any questions for Mr. Harlecker from the Commission?
Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Casey.
Yes, sorry. Is it River Rapids Drive that the traffic study is being done on, 124th?
It's 124th. I'm not sure of the name, and if we could get the PowerPoint presentation up, I'd be able to look at the map.
Okay.
It's either Riverdale Drive or Riverdale Boulevard.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Harlecker? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing in Planning Case 17-15 and Planning Case 17-16. If anyone here wishing to speak on either of these cases, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself. Seeing no one approaching the microphone, I will leave the public hearing open for the moment and open up to the Commission to see if anyone wants to make a motion consistent with staff recommendation. Commissioner Casey?
In...I will make a motion in Planning Case 17-15, and I'll incorporate...I'll do it separately.
Yeah, I think they want separate motions.
17-15, I move that the public hearing be opened and continue to the August 17 meeting and that we postpone action on this item to the same date.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Heickel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Returning to Planning Case 17-16, is there any motion?
Yeah. For the Commission to keep the public hearing open and continue to the August 17 Commission meeting and postpone action on this item to the same meeting of August 17.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Schmalki. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move on to Items 3 and 4 on the agenda. Before we start discussion, I will note that Chair Schwartz sent an email to the Commission noting that he would not be here tonight and asking that action on Items 3, 4, 5, and 6 be postponed to the August meeting of this body. I individually emailed back Chair Schwartz and asked if he had any questions or comments he wanted to make about these items, that he could email them to me and I would relay them to the Commission at the meeting. He individually emailed back to me those questions and comments that he had, and I have them with me. Having said that, if anyone on the Commission wants to discuss Chair Schwartz's request that we continue or make a motion, now would be the appropriate time. Commissioner Casey?
Would you, in lieu of that, would you bring up those discussion points for us to talk about that might be?
If we do continue to talk about these items, then yes. It would absolutely be my intention to relay Chair Schwartz's comments and questions.
Okay.
We have a technical glitch. Please be patient.
Okay.
Someone turned off the computer. I think what we're waiting for here is for this to come back up, and we do have a presentation for the retail buildings for the Amcon project. Representative from the applicant is in the audience tonight. And what we're looking for is to try to get some feedback that they can take back and make needed revisions to their plans, and then come back at the August meeting with those issues addressed. The major outstanding issue is traffic study that's currently being undertaken. And we're awaiting the results of those traffic, of that traffic study.
And to be clear...
We should have that by the time for the August meeting.
When you're talking about the Amcon proposals, you're referring back to Items 1 and 2 on the agenda.
Correct.
We were just discussing the possibility of postponing 3, 4, 5, and 6. I just want to make sure there was no confusion when you were talking about...
Okay.
Further action, or postponing things to August. You're talking about what we just did, postponed Items 1 and 2.
Right. But I was hoping to get in the presentation so the applicant could get some feedback from the Council.
Okay.
From the Commission.
Okay.
to this point?
Yes.
I think when Scott stepped out, he missed the action that the Commission took to continue Items 1 and 2, so I think there were some wires crossed in the action, so I apologize for that.
All right, here we go. I apologize for the delay.
So for clarity purposes, we're going back to Items 1 and 2 to get a presentation on...
Correct.
Okay.
And here's for everybody's refreshers, the Home Depot, and this is the area that's under consideration. This is the plat, the two lots for the retail buildings here and the larger lot for Home Depot. Here's how the proposed buildings sit and the overall plan for the overall site for Home Depot. You can see they're out in the far reaches of their parking lot. Home Depot has quite a bit of excess parking up here that they don't need and they're not required to have, so they were looking at putting that space to a better use. And so they've got somebody that's looking to do two retail buildings out in this location here. Here's a little bit closer view of what it is. And we've got Building 1 is 7,480 square feet. Building 2 is 8,400 square feet. There is a plaza area in between the two buildings. This area in here is being analyzed as part of the traffic study that's currently being conducted, as well as the possibility of putting another access point out here to help direct drive-through traffic out onto the drive instead of winding it back through in front of the project. At this point, they've got a mix of uses proposed. In Building 1, two retail spaces and a restaurant. Building 2, a coffee shop with a drive-through, retail spaces, and a restaurant. The proposed buildings will share this larger parking field with Home Depot. Their technically assigned parking spaces are in this area here. They do meet the parking requirements. The proposed building requires 124 spaces, and Home Depot 200. The site plan includes 131 spaces for the retail buildings and 384 for Home Depot. Home Depot's parking requirements, corporate parking requirements are much more stringent than the city's requirements are. Touched on access and circulation, that's the main issue that's outstanding. Building design, and I'll start with the landscape plan a little bit here. All the islands out in the parking lot have overstorey trees. They've got the existing lindens along this private drive here, 124th will remain. They're adding pine trees here, and they're adding landscaping, overstorey pine trees and ornamental trees along here. And this is up to pole assignment here. Over here on the drive-through, they do have a hedge proposed along here to help screen it from off-site. Dumpster enclosure here for this building, and dumpster enclosure here for this building. Additional screening will have to be included around those two dumpster enclosures. Staff is also looking for some additional plantings along the north side of the building here, some shrubs and overstorey trees between the back of this building and the curb line. These are the building elevations. They do a good mix of materials here, brick, stone, and different shades of ephes. Nice break in the roofline with the cornices up here breaking it up. This is the front elevation facing Home Depot. The windows all have canopies over them, and the columns at the main entrances really set those off. This is the north elevation. This is the plaza between them. Again, they've carried the materials around all four sides of the building with brick and ephes in this area here. These are the two sides that are adjacent to the plaza. Again, the materials carried around. Staff is recommending that the windows here and here also include awnings similar to what they got in the front. And then again, these are the two ends, the west end and east end. Again, awnings should be included over the windows, and the mix of materials is carried on around the building. The applicant is here and to answer any questions. He also brought material samples for the Commission to consider, take a look at, comment on.
If the...well, first of all, does the Commission have any questions for Mr. Harlecker after that presentation? If the applicant would like to make any comments or present the samples? Before you begin, if you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Dennis Cornelius. I'm with Amcon Construction. I'm at 5565 Blaine Avenue, Inver Grove Heights. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present today. The general review of the plan has just been taken place. I do have a color board that I could pass around if you'd like. There's color samples of the brick and stone. We also have the actual samples, which are rather heavy, so I can bring those up and show them. Would you like to be passed this way?
That'd be great.
I'm open to any questions about the project. We're anxious to get started. If we can get approval for the project, we understand the traffic is an issue that has to be addressed, and as soon as we get that information, we're going to work with the city to resolve any problems that do crop up from the study. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Casey?
I was wondering, Mr. Harlecker talked about awnings, and there are windows on all four sides of the buildings. Are you talking awnings on the east and the west facades? Are you talking north-south to...
I think it just was commented on. We had awnings on the south side, but the east and west sides, staff is recommending we add those. We don't have an issue with that. These are canvas awnings, and the sample of that shown within the board that was just passed.
So the north side?
The north side does not have windows. That is a opaque surface along that side.
Oh, sure.
We have a mixture of stone, brick, and ephes, but there is no storefronts on that side.
Very good. Thank you.
Hearing no additional questions, we did open a public hearing on these matters, and if anyone from the public heard the presentation and wants to make a comment now, we certainly...this would be a good time to do so. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a comment? The public hearing will remain open through into our August meeting. The Commission has already voted to postpone actions on these two items until the next meeting, so no further action by the Commission is needed on those items, and I think we are prepared at this point to move on to Items 3 and 4. We did discuss Chair Schwartz's request to continue the meeting. I did the same, like the Commission had any motion they wanted to make there, so I think we are prepared to proceed with considering those items, Mr. Harlecker.
Okay, Vice Chair and Commissioners, this property, as noted, is located at 3551 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The request is to change the land use designation and zoning from office to high-density residential. The applicant has also submitted corresponding request for a site plan and preliminary plat for this parcel as well as the adjacent parcels. Property is .37 acres, and it was home to a resident and a vacuum cleaner sales and repair business. The site is included in 128-unit site plan for an apartment building. At the time the apartment building was originally proposed and began development, this property here at 3551 was not under contract with the applicant, and the applicant was having difficulty contacting the property owner. Since that time, the applicant has contacted the property owner, have the site now under contract, and they are proposing that the zone change so it is consistent with the rest of the project site, the zone change and land use amendment to high-density residential. Lot size, given its size at .37 acres, the parcel on its own has limited economic feasibility for development. That's why it's being proposed to be included with the apartment site plan. Compatibility with adjacent residential uses to the north are single-family residences. To the west is the backyard of a lot that faces 115th up here. The current land use designation of that parcel there is office, single-family residential, and high-density residential. The zoning for the surrounding parcels are the same as the land use designation. Compatibility with Coon Rapids Boulevard Framework Plan. Plan identifies infill housing as a development principle. Because of the corridor's transit access, the framework plan includes a policy that calls for moderate to high-density housing in the areas between the ports, so the proposed land use change and zone change are consistent with that principle. Alignment with the comprehensive land use plan. The housing chapter of the land use plan identifies a variety of housing goals for the city, including allowing a variety of housing types and designs to allow people a housing choice. This amendment would allow additional acreage for high-density housing, and would create an opportunity to develop underutilized vacant site. And land use chapter also identifies the goal to improve the appearance and function of Coon Rapids Boulevard. This proposal, or these two proposals, support that goal by eliminating underutilized and obsolete land uses and increases the opportunity to increase the number of housing units. And in Planning Case 17-22 and 17-23, staff is recommending approval of the proposed land use plan amendment from office to high-density residential, and recommends, Planning Commission recommend approval of the corresponding zone change request from office to high-density Findings in support of those recommendations are found in the staff report.
Commissioner, are there any questions for Mr. Harlecker?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Schmalki?
So, one quick question then. The parcel to the left of the site, it is going to remain as is then, office use?
Commissioner Schmalki, correct.
Okay, just want to clarify.
Mr. Casey?
Mr. Harlecker, then there's no access to that single office lot from Coon Rapids Boulevard?
At this point, Commissioner Casey, no, that is part of this...this is a larger parcel, and access to this parcel is off of, currently off of 115th.
Is that a residential parcel?
Yes, it is.
Off of 115th?
Yeah.
And then the backside of it is office?
Correct.
Okay. So it sits out there by its lonesome then for now?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none. We're going to have a combined public hearing for Items 22 and 23, or 1722 and 1723, the land use plan amendment and the zone change, and I'll open that public hearing. If there's anyone who wishes to speak as to either of those issues, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the issues in 1722 or 1723? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commission?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
This seems like a pretty logical extension of what we did last year, changing office to high-density residential. It's just like an extension. I will make a motion. There's no further discussion. In Planning Case 1722, I move that we approve the amendment to the city's comprehensive land use plan to change the land use designation from office to high-density residential based on the following four findings, and I won't go into those, but they're in the text of the 1722 proposal.
Chair, a second?
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Knoblock. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission. Decision will be made by the City Council on August 15. Is there any discussion as to Planning Case 1723?
Okay, and Planning Case 17-23, I move that we recommend approval for the proposed zone change to high-density residential based on the following four proposed, or five on this one. Proposed rezoning to high-density residential is consistent with the land use designation of high-density residential. Number two, the proposed rezoning is compatible with the adjacent land uses and zoning. Number three, the times and conditions have changed so that the reasonable use of the property cannot be made under the current zoning. Number four, the proposed zone change would not have an adverse impact on the area. And number five, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Coon Rapids Boulevard framework plan and the River Rapids overlay district.
Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by Casey. Is there any discussion as to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission. It'll be introduction by the City Council on August 2. Final decision to be made at their meeting on August 15. And we will move on to the fifth item on our agenda, Planning Case 17-20, a site plan for 128-unit apartment building at 3525 through 3551 Coon Rapids Boulevard, firm ground architects and engineers. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, Vice Chair Schwartz, or excuse me, Stevenson. Along with this, my presentation will include both of these, the preliminary plat as well as the site plan. The preliminary plat is pretty straightforward. They're taking the individual parcels and plating them into one lot right here. It's a 2.6 acre lot, and this is being done as part of the overall development of the parcel, of the parcels, I should say. The site plan that goes along with this preliminary plat includes 128-unit apartment building along with about 1,800 square feet of commercial slash office space. The plan includes 105 enclosed parking spaces and 53 exterior spaces. The building's five stories high and includes a mix of studio, one and two-bedroom units. There are 69 one-bedroom units, 19 studio, and 42-bedroom. There's kind of a unique design to the building that is in response to a deep sewer line that runs through the parcel. that runs through the parcel right here. In order to allow access to that for maintenance, the applicant designed the building so the first two floors, there's a break between them, and you'll see this in the elevation. It's almost like a tunnel through there. And then floors three, four, and five extend over the top of it. As part of this site plan request, the applicant is also requesting flexibility for density and the mix of uses. That's use flexibility, and that requires Planning Commission recommendation and City Council approval. The applicant is also requesting design and dimensional flexibility for building height, setbacks, parking, and some other design features. Dimensional and design flexibility can be granted with the Planning Commission approval. Parking and access, there's a hundred-and-fifty-eight total parking spaces. That equates to a ratio of about one-point-two-three spaces per unit. Code requires two-point-two-five, and that's one of the items that they're requesting flexibility on. The plan includes a hundred-and-five enclosed spaces. Code requires ninety-six, so they exceed the number of enclosed spaces, but are requesting flexibility for the total number of spaces on site. Forty-one spaces are enclosed on the first floor here. Access to those forty-one spaces are out here, out to one-hundred-and-fifteen. Sixty-four spaces are located below grade in this area here. Access to those spaces is via this loop here that loops around the outside of the building, and access is here. All enclosed spaces are contract spaces and will be assigned specifically to apartments and residents. On this end here, parking spaces are eighteen feet deep. Code requires twenty, so there'll have to be an adjustment on this end of the building. There is room in there to accommodate the twenty-foot spaces. They'll have to reconfigure the drive aisle here in order to do that. Access from Coon Rapids Boulevard at this point here and this point here through the center of the building. These two space, these two drives will access the exterior parking as well as the basement parking in the building. Parking is set back five feet from this property line here. Code requires eight feet, so they're be asking flexibility for that. And as well as the parking inside, adjacent to the building here through the center drive aisle, code requires six feet, or ten feet, and there's six feet here. And then on the outer edge here, there's a five-foot setback. So those are items that they are also requesting flexibility for. Site plan has been set to Anoka County Highway Department for their review. Any comments that Anoka County will have will have to be incorporated into the design of the building. Here's a more detailed view of the entrance and the proposed outdoor space. And this is the center of drive aisle that goes through the center of the building. The main entrance to the apartments is right here, out facing Coon Rapids Boulevard with stairs going up to it and then a ramp looping out and going this way. The main entrance to the west end here, and this is the, you'll see it on the floor plan, but this is where the commercial-slash-retail, or, commercial office space is. The main entrance for that is right here. All this area here is undercover. They've got benches located here and bike racks here in back of the building. This over here is kind of a detailed area of their proposed outdoor space. They've got a playroom, this area here, and this area here is more of an adult space with seating, barbecue area with a grill, and then a pergola. Grading plan, grading from the project, or drainage from the project will go back through a system of basins here, back to this area here. Grading plan and drainage, any urgent control plans have been viewed, reviewed by the engineering department, and they're working with the applicant to address engineering issues. The landscaping, we've got overstory trees along Coon Rapids Boulevard. Additional trees will be required here to fill in on this side of the street. On this area here is the office commercial space. And in this end here is the common area for the apartment. We've got ornamental trees along this side of the building here, shrubs and perennials across the front here and here. You've got overstory trees down in this end of the building and on the parking lot island. We've got a hedge proposed along here. There is a mature row of arborvitae along this property line here, and then they're adding landscaping to supplement that. Landscaping includes a mix of ornamental, evergreens, and overstory trees. They've got landscaping and shrubs around the, this is the drive aisle that goes down into the underground parking. So they've got landscaping in front and then a landscaping behind it. So as you come in and you look through the tunnel here, you'll see a landscaped area on the backside. This area in here is the, the open space. They've got overstory trees, ornamentals, and some evergreens in here. Staff is recommending that they put additional trees out front. The grading plan will remove the existing trees out here. Staff is recommending that those be replaced. They've got to be planted in such a way so that they can maintain fifty-foot visibility down along the right-of-way here. Staff is also recommending additional overstory trees and ornamental trees along here to help soften the view of this end of the building. This is the common area, excuse me, landscaping. You have the detail of the ornamental trees and shrubs, some overstory trees, and again the shrubs across the back, as well as landscaping right around the perimeter of the open space, or the amenity here with the pergola and outdoor seating. This is what they're proposing, is what the proposed building looks like. Again, you can see now, this is where the sewer line goes through with the first two floors are disconnected, and the top three floors are connected across the top. They do have a mix of materials, includes brick, stone, cement siding of various textures and colors. And the applicant does have material boards within tonight, and they'll be able to give a more detailed presentation of the architecture of the building. One of the conditions should the Planning Commission approve the site plan is that thirty percent of the front elevation be brick or stone. The proposed elevation does not meet that requirement at this point. Here are more line drawings of the elevation. This is the elevation facing Coon Rapids Boulevard. Again, you can see this glass area here is where the common area is for the apartment This is the, the west elevation of the apartment building. Again, this view here is actually underneath the third and fourth floors, is internal to that, to the tunnel area. So they've got glass along there, they've got glass along the north elevation, and this elevation here includes the end of the smaller building, the west building here, and then the east wall, or west wall of the larger building here. This is the east elevation. This is the side of the building that faces the U-Haul. One of the reasons they've got parking on the first floor here is, is so as, they didn't want to put units out with stair right into the, the side of the U-Haul building. So by putting parking on that, it raises up the units a little bit, the first unit, so they've got a little more sunlight and a better view out of their windows. And then this is the north elevation. Again, you can see the windows for the apartment buildings, for the apartment common area Now we can discuss the flexibility issues. Let's start with, they are requesting use flexibility for density. The hundred-and-twenty-eight units create a density of forty-seven-point-seven units per acre. River Rapids overlay district has a maximum density of seven units per acre. That equates to nineteen units. Planning Commission can recommend approval of use flexibility provided it meets four findings. The first one is advances the intent of the section, and the density proposed promotes a compact and vigorous development, takes advantage of the nearby Anoka Ramsey Community College, Mercy Hospital, and the associated medical buildings. It includes a well-organized vehicular pedestrian circulation, and the development is constructed of high-quality materials and reflects innovative design. The target population for this apartment building is really clients that are associated with the college, the hospital, and the adjacent medical facilities. That's who they see as their primary tenants for this building. The second finding is that the property is developed in an efficient and organized way. The proposed density will allow redevelopment of the parcel along Coon Rapids Boulevard. The plan provides significant site amenities, buffers, and of other elements that offset potential effects that could be caused by the use. You've got the common open space here. The building is set back as far from the adjacent residential uses as possible, and they did have, or they are proposing a significant amount of landscaping between the building and the properties to the north. And the use does not detract from the port district. The proposed density will help support existing uses in the port campus square, port wellness. It will provide additional housing for those that are associated with the principal uses in those ports, which are the college, the hospital, and medical office buildings. The second item that is, requires use flexibility is the mix of uses. The applicant is proposing about eighteen-hundred square feet of commercial-slash-office space right here. Code does not allow for the mix of uses. It only allows accessory retail shopping, so it really narrows potential tenants for that space. The proposed mix of uses will encourage compact, vigorous mixed-use development by combining commercial and office uses in the same building as, as the residences are. The scale of the proposed uses are compatible with the proposed high-density residential development. The mix of uses is at a scale that can be supported by area residents, and it makes good use of first-floor space along Coon Rapids Boulevard. The proposed mixed, mix of uses should not adversely impact the development. Clients and customers using the, the space will likely visit during the day when the residents are gone and additional parking is available. And finally, the use does not detract from other uses in the ports. The small-scale commercial office space will not adversely detract from campus square and port wellness. At this point, applicants have had some discussions with a possible tenant, which is a chiropractor, and he likes the proximity to the hospital. The applicant is also requesting design flexibility for the following item. Building height. The proposed building is sixty-feet, sixty-six feet high, measured to the top of the parapets here, so from ground to its highest point is sixty-six feet. The maximum height allowed is forty-five feet. The findings for design flexibility include the modification is necessary to respond to site conditions will result in better integration of uses, provide site amenities, buffers, and other elements that will offset any harmful effects. And third, will further the intent of the section. The applicant has designed the building at sixty-six feet based on the height of seventy feet, which is allowed in the high-density residential district. They need this to achieve the desired unit count and density along this underutilized section of Coon Rapids Boulevard. They believe that the design of the building will be a landmark along the Boulevard, an example of, a good example of high-density housing. The building height will allow for parking and commercial uses on the first floor while allowing the density needed to make the project possible. Additional screening is proposed, and the building will be set back from the residences behind the site. The building's urban design and variety of materials will create an active facade seen from the Boulevard. And finally, the proposed building height allows for the proposed density of forty-seven-point-eight units per acre. That'll promote the compact, vigorous development and takes advantage, again, of the college, the hospital, and adjacent medical buildings. Now we'll discuss dimensional flexibility. They're asking dimensional flexibility for parking. As stated earlier, they're proposing a hundred-and-fifty-eight parking spaces at a ratio of one-point-two-three spaces per unit. Code requires two-and-a-quarter spaces per unit. The findings for dimensional flexibility is an applicant demonstrates such modification will result in better integration of uses or additional public amenities that will further the intent of this section. The modification will result in better integration of uses, and that constructing additional spaces would result in the reduction of open space and landscaping. The proximity to the hospital, college, and the bus service along Coon Rapids Boulevard should reduce the demand for parking. They're also asking for flexibility for lot coverage. The applicant is proposing a lot coverage of sixty-point-five percent. The maximum allowed is fifty percent. The additional coverage is needed to accommodate the necessary parking. The applicant is providing enhanced outdoor amenity space in here as well as the additional landscaping for residents to fully enjoy the opens, the open space and lot coverage. The next one relates directly to open space. The applicant is proposing a little over forty-seven thousand square feet of open space. Code requires thirty-six thousand. So they are meeting the overall requirement for open space. However, code does require that the minimum dimensional requirement in any direction be fifty feet. That cannot be met in this, in this building, in this project here. The applicant, the building's footprint- footprint really prohibits that fifty-foot minimum dimension anywhere on the site. So that's what they're asking flexibility for, is that minimum dimension requirement. Building setbacks. The applicant is seeking flexibility for building setbacks from the moderate-density develop zoning here, the single-family here, and the general commercial on this site here. Code requires a setback of eighty-five feet from the LDR two district, which is this area here. Fifty feet is proposed. Code requires sixty feet from the moderate density, which is this area here. The applicant is requiring fifty feet. And fifty feet from the general commercial and fifty feet is proposed. The applicant has moved the building as far as possible from the residential districts here. The grinding of dimensional flexibility for setbacks allows the project to move forward. They are mitigating that that impact with the reduced setbacks by the landscaping in this area right in through here. The grinding of setbacks will allow the project to be better integrated into the overall development along Coon Rapids Boulevard. Parking setbacks. Touched on this earlier. They're seeking flexibility for the parking setback here, here, and on both sides on the internal here. The flexibility will allow the the drive aisles to go right up to the sidewalks in the area, allow for easier drop-off and and possible pickup of people. The granting the flexibility for parking will result in a better integration of uses on the site, and it results in a more efficient parking And finally, the minimum finished floor area. The applicant is proposing nineteen studio apartments. Code requires five hundred square feet per unit minimum. Eleven of those nineteen units come in at four hundred and eighty square feet. So they're twenty square feet less than than the code requires. The applicant believes that the smaller units will be more palatable to their target population, and the programmed outdoor space and the large community space on the first floor provides opportunities to gather and interact with other residents. Briefly go over the the floor plan here. This is the underground parking with the entrance coming in here. And all these spaces here, they will be assigned to specific apartments and residents. Here's the first floor, again with parking on the first floor here, with access for just these parking stalls here going out to one hundred and fifteenth. Again, there are some units on the first floor here. These two units out front have direct access out to along Coon Rapids Boulevard and include decks and stairways and sidewalks connecting to the sidewalks here out along Coon Rapids Boulevard. And then this area here on the first floor is the commercial space slash office space, and then the indoor community area here. Second floor, again, they're all very similar. We got the apartments here and here. This is the split for the tunnel. Each floor has a joint storage area that meets code requirements. And then third, fourth, and fifth and, excuse me, fifth floors are all the same with stairways here and here, elevators located here and here. So with that, staff is recommending the planning commission approve the site plan with use and design flexibility with the fifteen conditions included in the staff report. Staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval of use flexibility for density and mix of uses. And staff is also recommending that the planning commission approve the use of design and dimensional flexibility. If that'll answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience tonight and would like to give a brief presentation and go through a little more detail with architecture and the reasons for requesting flexibility.
Okay. Before we hear from the applicant, are there questions for the commission, for Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, I have one.
Commissioner Stevens?
Under the mixed uses, could you give, I mean, it says commercial or office. Could you, for the audience, could you let us know what some of those things could entail? Besides, you said a chiropractic office.
Yeah.
But what are some things that could go in there? You know, so because this is unique. Is there any place in Coon Rapids right now that's doing this?
There there is not.
Right. So that's why, you know, just to give them some ideas.
I think the applicant sees that as as a smaller commercial use, possibly some sort of coffee shop, maybe some smaller retail space in there that is geared towards the residence. Eighteen hundred square feet is not a lot of lot of space. So you're going to get some some small-scale users that when they're, like applicants indicated, they don't have a specific tenant tied up for that space, but they would like the flexibility for some sort of office, medical office, chiropractor, therapeutic massage, something like that.
Okay. Just so the audience knows what some of the uses might be that could go in there. Okay. Thank you.
Hearing no further questions from the commission, if the applicant wants to make a statement or presentation, come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tom Osmond, CEO from Ground Architects. We're delighted to be here in front of you again after going through the resoning process last year. I think everybody sort of got a sneak preview of what we were thinking about for this project in terms of the basic use. What I would like, did you include this rendering in the package that went to them?
This one, no, just the big one.
Can we just pass this one out? Let them pass it around, kind of get a closer look at it. Some of the developments that have occurred since we met last on this site included the the challenge of working with the sewer line that was identified on the site. No, at no other time, I understand from the planet, from the city staff, was the, were any projects to the point where that got identified for them? And so once we found out about it, we were a little surprised. But we worked collaboratively and creatively with city staff to come up with a solution we think works very well by creating a, I don't want to call it a tunnel, it's not a tunnel, it's access through the building that allows us to create entry, a great entry point for the apartment building, and also creates an opening large enough that should that sewer in the future need to be serviced, that there's room there for a backhoe to get in underneath there and to to do the work that needs to be done if that should ever take place. It also drove the decision on the site plan to create the second exit entrance off of Coon Rapids Boulevard to the west. We had originally not planned to do two on Coon Rapids, just the one. But the engineer's comment was if that's closed, then you can't get into the site. So we kept so we kept the access point that's related to that vacuum repair shop space as part of our strategy then in order to have two two access points on that side. The, I think that that those are kind of the driving forces that changed the configuration slightly from what you saw last time. The other piece of 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 what we've been working on is how to make this building really have some variety to the materials and be a good addition to the the view corridor along Coon Rapids Boulevard. So you can see from the rendering that we've passed around and the materials on the board here, these are all actual samples, brick thirty percent on the on the front, and then it'll be on the base around the rest of the building, and a wood look and a, you know, some other strong siding materials that'll give us some variety there and create a really attractive building for for the Boulevard. I think from an economic standpoint, the driver here for the number of units and the cost of building a building these days, we've got to get to a certain unit mix to create a financially stable model for for development here. The number of units does not create a huge amenity space to support it, but we do have what I think is a really terrific amenity space. There will be a club room. There will be a family dining room so that people that have the smaller units, say if you've got an empty nest couple that have moved into the building and they want to have their family over for a holiday or a birthday, but they don't have the room in their apartment, there will be a family dining room on the first floor that will be available for use. And then, again, some of the lifestyle things that you're seeing in some of the more urban development locations for for this type of housing that we feel will appeal very strongly to both the the older students and staff of the of the college and for the burgeoning staff that's coming towards the hospital. So the outdoor spaces, we do have the kids' area, so we are not limiting ourselves here. We assume there'll be some families that'll move into this building as well. And, you know, just really great social, outside social spaces to drive interaction with the with the residents. The other things I want to just touch on real quickly is our continued sensitivity to the neighbors to the north. The folks that are in the house that I'll call the corner are, they're getting back their backyard. We're giving them the, right now, that their backyard has a fence that runs through it, that there's this large pointed area that is actually in Dennis's yard right now. So they'll get that back. So their buffer will actually be deeper in their backyard because they're going to have their full backyard, their full their full lot size, which they don't have right now. So they'll enjoy a much larger backyard. It's our intention to have a landscape allowance in our budget to help them refinish that area so that it's a nice green space for their use. We've pulled the building forward towards Coon Rapids Boulevard in order to create as large a green space landscaped area in the back as we could. And the last thing that I just want to touch on is there's been a concern all the way along about traffic coming onto one hundred and fifteenth. And what we've tried to do there is limit the cars coming and going from the building to only those that are parked on that first floor. There's no link back. So all, you know, all one hundred and fifty stalls don't come and can't come and go from that from that drive aisle. It's only the forty-one stalls on the first floor. And again, the the sewer line drives our need to park on the first floor because we can't park under the full footprint of the building because of the sewer location. So basically, not parking under the the building from the the cut through the building to the to the to the west. So that part is all basically slab on grade. Pat Sarver from Civil Site Group is our civil and landscape group. There, he's here tonight if you have any other questions regarding site planning amenities. We we looked at the setbacks. The the one that I think is the really tight one is the one against the U-Haul building. But when you look at the site currently, we are about fifteen feet further back from that property line than what exists currently. So we tried in all cases to create some improvements with the flexibilities we're asking for in order for this project to be large enough to be economically viable for us to keep moving forward with. So with that, I want to, and I want to thank both Scott and Grant. They've been really instrumental in sort of keeping us on track and making sure that we're making the right decisions here for you guys. So we're here to answer any questions for anybody today on anything that you see.
Okay. We'll open up to questions from the commission. First, I do have a few questions that were relayed from Chair Schwartz. Chair Schwartz was concerned about the parking. His first question was, once the site is developed, where would you place overflow vehicles?
The the point of this part, this particular development is that it's it's a it's a fairly urban application in a suburban, in a suburban location. The, what we're planning to do is support, be supportive of pedestrian and bicycle traffic here because we are so close to both the school and the hospital. We are, we are assuming that we're going to have quite a few residents who either bike or walk and do not have a have an automobile on the site. Is somebody going to throw a big party and there's going to be a hundred and fifty cars here? I don't see that happening. It certainly can be one of the landlord rules in terms of when people sign their leases, about how many people they can have over. We can control that somewhat. I'm not, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure what the what the allowable, is there allowable parking on Coon Rapids Boulevard, street parking? There is not. So my guess is that we're going to have to work as 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 a, with our landlord, with our property management, just to reduce the possibility that there could be some kind of large event on this site. It certainly is not our intention that there would be.
This is my question, but it's along the same veins. The outdoor parking that you have, is that for use just of the commercial site, or will residents be allowed to park there?
We see that as a shared model, that the residents that drive that would come and go for work or school, that might want a car, would that be in that surface lot, would leave, at least a portion of them would leave during the day, that would allow people to park there who are using the the commercial space.
Chair Schwartz asked, do you have other developments, and I think he's thinking about suburban developments, you're managing now that have this parking ratio?
We do not.
And then?
We can certainly, as a catalyst to that, we've been working with Pinnacle, which does a lot of property management. We can certainly ask them about that and get some response from them. We personally do not manage space, the apartment buildings.
So, I mean, you're answering that you don't manage them. I mean, have you developed other properties that have this type of parking match?
In more densely urban areas, but not in a not a suburban setting like this.
Okay. And the other, one of the other areas that he had concerns about, and I'll, for the commission, I'll read his concerns when we are having a discussion. I'm just doing the questions that he had now. But he also had questions about the size of the studios, particularly the smallest ones that are four hundred and eighty square feet. And his question was, do you currently have any other developments with studios of this size, meaning four hundred and eighty, or I guess even smaller?
Yes. We've done them before.
Have you done them in suburban areas?
Yes. And and we have to be careful about how we say that because, you know, if we if we, it all depends on where we measure from too, as to whether it's four eighty or five hundred to some extent. So at this point, the units are somewhat flexible. If we need to bump them up to five hundred, well, we can squeeze down the bigger units and increase the size. So we have some flexibility with that.
Can I ask, actually, this, I lived in a five hundred square foot apartment for a couple of years, and actually lived on an even smaller one for a year. But I recall that the five hundred square foot apartment included the closet space and the balcony when they were measuring it. And so the actual, like, living space was even smaller. Can I ask, does the, does four eighty, is that all of the space within the unit, or are you knocking out?
It's the space within the unit. Right, exactly. You were paying for the, you were probably paying for the, to the center line of both of the walls. That's the way we typically figure it. We don't have a lot of inset balconies, so there's not, there's not going to be square footage loss to a balcony in this case. But, yeah, you probably were paying for the balcony too.
Definitely was. Are there any questions from the commission for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, I think we'll move on to the public hearing. I will open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to? If there's anyone wishing to make comment, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Thanks.
And do we usually do five minutes or three? I can't remember what.
Five, five.
Five, limit your remarks to five minutes, please.
Could we see the board?
Oh, and if there's a material board, we'd love to have that.
Yeah, could we see it?
Pass her on.
Yeah, please.
You know what, Scott, let me just take, carry it up there for him because it's... Our student intern got a little overzealous. Nothing's fallen off of it, that's for certain.
So the darker is what then? So this is, oh, I see the gray above.
So the brick here, we have this part here. This is the wood look piece, and then this is the, kind of the gray neutral panel piece.
The wood frames, the windows, is that what it is?
The wood, yeah, down. And these are all basically the same material with a different finish on it. It adds to, or makes it, it adds to the, the ability to kind of make the building move and change, but it's, it's all the same in terms of how it's installed, which allows us to do that economically.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you can state your name and address for the record.
Jane Hawkinson, thirty-four, eighty-nine, One Hundred and Fifteenth Lane. And I'm seeing when you come out of the building on Coon Rapids Boulevard that because of the way Coon Rapids Boulevard is, you'd be going right toward the hospital. And anyone that wants to go the other way left will be going back on One Hundred and Fifteenth Lane and up to Pheasant Ridge to the stop sign, I mean, down our street.
I think that only the people who have parking in the, on that first floor, the forty-one units, will have access to One Hundred and Fifteenth. The people who have parking underneath the building and who are visiting the building won't be able to get to One Hundred and Fifteenth, is, is what the design shows. So they will have to go right and then presumably make a U-turn at the next intersection.
So how many people are on that bottom level, ninety?
I think they said forty-one units, forty-one.
Forty-one.
Forty-one spaces.
There are forty-one spaces that will have access to.
Forty-one spaces will have.
Yeah.
The traffic on One Hundred and Fifteenth, because we have an apartment building on the end, is a lot right now. And, I don't know, I just don't want to see any more traffic there. They're speeding up and down that street all the time. And I was trying to see if there's any other way we could direct that traffic. I know they said at the last meeting that they had to have that opening for, I can't remember, or something. I don't know if it's for emergency vehicles or something. I can't remember what they said they needed that for. But I'm just worried about the traffic on One Hundred and Fifteenth.
Hello, I'm Cindy Johnson. I live at thirty-five, sixty-five, One Hundred and Fifteenth Avenue Northwest. And I have a couple of concerns. I, right now, I am, like Peterson's is right out my backyard, so I view the whole site, you know, out my, and my whole yard is cleared. With the extra traffic coming out on Coon Rapids Boulevard, is there, you know, are they just going to be able to just come out? I mean, there's no, like, going to be any stop sign there or anything? Because right now, I see all the traffic that comes from down, you know, up like the other townhouses there, and they all make a U-turn, you know, right behind my yard. It's just constant U-turns. And I'm thinking with all this extra traffic, if the people are going to come out and want to go the other way, they're going to be in that same place where the other ones are going like this now and this way. And I think there's going to be, I mean, Coon Rapids Boulevard right now is like a racetrack, and people just speed. And I'm wondering if there isn't just going to be a lot of traffic problems. You know, maybe accidents or, you know, everybody making the U-turn since there is only one way, you know, to get out of this new place. And if they want to go back the other way, they're going to be making U-turns in the same place that the other ones do. I mean, I see the increase because of those few townhouses down the way. And I think this is going to be a lot of increase where people are going to pull out and, you know, want to go, and there's going to be a lot of U-turns right now. If the, if the entrance or the exit is going to be the same as the existing out of Peterson's right now, that's, you know, they're just going to all make a U-turn there and, you know, with the speed of the traffic on Coon Rapids Boulevard, that, you know, some consideration needs to be made for that because I think there's going to be accidents. Because it's, it's, the traffic on Coon Rapids Boulevard and the speed right now, it's incredible, the amount of speeders. It's really bad. I mean, I see it all day. My backyard is right, right to that, so I, I know, I don't know what can be done with that, but it's just a consideration. And I have one other item. Since my yard has the sewer that goes through it too, I've got the easement, so I know exactly where that split is and where they are going to drive around and come out. You know, anything that, considering like the headlights, I mean, they're going to be like right in the back of my house all night long. There's anything that can be done about that to direct the traffic or, you know, I don't know, there's any kind of buffer that can be made for that, but I'm going to obviously have the headlights in my home all night long because I'm right across from where they're going to be coming out.
So maybe I'd like to elaborate. Is this, you live here?
One Hundred and Fifteenth. I live across.
Oh, over this way?
Over that way, mhm.
Okay.
Right across from, I look out right now and I can see Peterson's Floral right there. The, my neighbors, I don't suppose, will care because they've got woods. I've got mine landscaped all the way to the back, so I can see right up to Coon Rapids Boulevard.
I can speak to that a little bit. I know the county's long-term plan is to close off any median breaks through there.
Yeah, because right now, it's a lot.
And they had indicated initially in their letter, or their comments to me, is that they'll, they'll probably be looking for closure of those median breaks as part of this project. So that'll eliminate people trying to do the U-turns.
Trying to, yeah, do the U-turns. Because they do that now constantly, it's all day long, U-turns.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing?
My name is Pamela Dugas, and I live at thirty-four, ninety-nine, One Hundred and Sixteenth Avenue Northwest. My, my concern really is about the parking. Not that it will maybe impact me directly, but people around me. I don't know, I think there are assumptions being made that people, not everybody will necessarily have a vehicle that is choosing to live at the apartments, but allowing for only one point two spaces per tenant, to me, seems a little unrealistic. There may, what happens if everybody does have a vehicle? Or they're both, maybe two people that live in the same unit have, they both have a vehicle? What happens with the overflow parking? Really, where do people park? And will it impact the neighboring streets? It's just a concern I have. I don't think we can make assumptions. I mean, there's no study about who's going to be living there exactly, so that is a concern that I have.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. It's now time for the commission to comment, discuss the proposal. I think now would be an appropriate time for me to relay Chair Schwartz's comments and concerns. And I'll note that these are his concerns, not necessarily mine. I'm just giving voice to them. He wrote, "You are proposing a hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces for a hundred and twenty-eight unit apartment building, which I feel is way too few. City code requires two point two-five per unit or two hundred and eighty-eight spaces, and you're proposing one point two-three per unit. Once the site is developed, where would you place the overflow vehicles? There is no place to add on the site to add additional parking later. Do you have other developments you're managing now with this parking ratio? This just isn't enough parking, and there is no place to add more, and that is with the request to design flexibility from fifty percent to sixty point five percent for lot coverage that you are asking for. You are requesting numerous uses of flexibility in the area of setbacks, such as parking, lot lines, and building to parking area, to name a few. Some of these requests are small, but a couple of them are quite sizable. Your request for density flexibility to allow forty-seven point seven or forty-seven point eight units per acre, since both figures are used throughout the report, is almost seven times the density allowed under the River Rapids Overlay District, which is at seven units per acre. While I might be able to see allowing some flexibility in this area, I feel that just shy of seven times is pushing things way too far. You're proposing nineteen studio apartments, of which eleven are four hundred and eighty square feet, as a living area of like twenty by twenty-four. I'm sorry, but I can't see anyone wanting to live in such a tiny accommodations. Do you currently have any developments with studios of this size? And here is another area where you are requesting flexibility from code, which has a minimum size of five hundred square feet." Do other commission members have comments?
Vice Chair Stevens.
Mr. Noah.
I have a couple of questions that I think can be answered by Mr. Harlecker. In regards to the plan and the tunnel, that all meets with fire access and for emergency vehicles? My, is my concern, like, since we're already talking about the restrictive space and parking, I'm concerned about access for emergency vehicles, like fire equipment for a multi-unit building such as this.
Yes, Commissioner Knoblock, they can get through here. The, the area is wide enough and tall enough to accommodate emergency vehicles, as well as if a backhoe had to get in there and do digging. They do have turning movements identified on here that correspond to large trucks and emergency vehicles. So it appears that those can, can fit through there. I know there was a couple engineering comments where they might have to do some adjustments to set up staging areas for the, for the ladder truck. That was one of the city engineer's comments.
Okay. Another question I had is, the building height is, is, if correct, is scheduled or planned to be sixty-six feet versus the forty-five feet? I'm curious, what is the height of the U-Haul building, to your recollection, to the southeast of it? Does that meet the fifty-five, or is that a special?
I'm not sure how tall that is.
Okay, it looks tall. Another question regarding the design, curious, is the roof just a roof? Or are there additional amenities on top, like a track or, like roof access?
Yeah, as far as I know, it's just a roof. I don't know if they have any, no plans for anything else.
Any concerns? I know with open mic, there was concern about traffic study. Is there, has there been a proposed traffic study in regards to inflows and outflows of the two entrances onto Coon Rapids Boulevard?
There has not been a traffic study, Commissioner Knoblock, but the project was sent to Anoka County, and they will assess the project's impact on their, on their county road.
Is there a pending timeframe for Anoka County's response?
Well, they'll have to get back. Like I said, their initial comments verbally were that they would, they're looking at closing the median breaks. They wanted the applicant to provide reasons, rationalization for the two parking stalls, the two driveways as opposed to just one. At this point, at the point I spoke with them, they were not requiring right turn lanes. I think that might hinge on what happens with the two access points. And they were going to look to see if it met their separation requirements on the county road.
Okay.
Things like that.
Okay, I have no more questions, thank you. Mr. Waralucker.
Vice Chair Stevens. I just have a question. If you could pull up the map from the office, you know, way back.
That, too.
Where the, and that you can outline, like, where we changed the zoning. Great, okay, so on the office site that is, yep, right there, no, over one, yep. What is there right now?
It's undeveloped.
It's undeveloped. So is there any way, thinking outside the box, to incorporate that to, for more parking?
It's certainly possible, it belongs to a single-family owner.
Can you come up to the microphone to answer the question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just trying to think of...
I apologize for making you come up, but I want to make sure.
No, it's fine, that's what we're here for.
The, that lot is, is just a deep residential lot. It's wooded. The sidewalk that's coming from the west ends right there. So, I mean, the one thing we might want to try and do is see if we can get them to let us put sidewalk, you know, continue to, so the sidewalk can connect through there. You know, we're paying about a million dollars total for the property right now, so unless, you know, unless the parking ratio became a really big issue, I don't think we would necessarily... Well, I take that back. I think, now that I think about it, John has talked to that owner. She's an older gal, as I recall, and her children would get involved with any deal that happens there, and we just didn't push it very far.
Okay.
But it certainly would be a way for us to increase...
I mean, even if you didn't buy the whole thing, but just enough to...
Just the back.
You know, I mean, just to expand it into that area.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a thought of...
It's certainly possible. We could explore it further.
Because I just didn't know if you had talked, because I didn't think that there was anything on there when I had looked and bought.
No, it's, it's basically wooded right along the street, and then it's kind of rolls into her backyard, so.
Okay, all right. So that is another, I mean, can't force anybody to sell their land, but that's another area. Okay, thank you.
Down the road, maybe?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Casey.
Mr. Harlecker, maybe you can, I have some concerns with the traffic flow in there. And maybe something that shows that tunnel drive going in, one of the graphics that has that in it. So when you come in off of Coon Rapids Boulevard into that, you go through that tunnel, you have the option of going left into the, is it fifty-eight surface spots there? Or you can kind of veer right and follow that circular drive if you're going underground?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so if you would go left to those surface slots, there, there's fifty-eight of them, they're, they are eighteen feet deep, they need to be twenty, and that seems to be one of the conditions attached at the back part of the motion or would-be motion?
Commissioner Casey, maybe I, let me elaborate on that a little bit. The only, only spaces that do not meet the requirement are these. I think there's ten of them.
Okay.
Right here. The perimeter spaces can be eighteen feet. That allows for overhang.
Code allows that?
Yes, so it's just these little, this cluster of spaces here.
Okay. Okay, so there are fifty-eight there, and there's no access out of One Hundred and Fifteenth. That's, that's just for the first floor parking. Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, all right. Just trying to work through it here. Probably have more questions, but right at this instant, thank you. Thank you.
Some of the verbal from the county was, "Can you exit the whole site off on one-fifteen?" And we're like, "We're not even gonna go there."
Oh, yeah, yeah, that wouldn't be popular.
No, it wouldn't.
Vice Chair.
Mr. Schmalki.
So I'm, I'm gonna just figure out, I think everybody's got the same or has the same major concerns in terms of traffic flow and the, the parking, but let me do a quick question on the traffic flow again. So, you mentioned, uh, Mr. Harlecker, that they're planning to, um, uh, shut off the, uh, median so that people can't make those U-turns in the middle of the road type, type of thing, once they come out of the parking lot, they can't make a U-turn immediately in any particular area, right? They will be at some point. So where will that divert the traffic to then, to understand where the traffic flow will continue then, if they want to go, um, the opposite direction on Coon Rapids Boulevard effectively?
Well, what's, uh, Commissioner Schmalki, once those median breaks are closed up, they'll be right in, right out only, and I think the next median break then is down just before, um, where Autumn Glenn is, I believe, down in that area, um, there's a median break. I'm not sure what the county's long-range plan is for that median break. If they do close that, then it'll be Long Lake Boulevard.
So I think the, the concern is, is even if it diverts it to the next, uh, median break, it doesn't change the problem, right? The, the concern that there are, there is a, a great amount of traffic or a presumed amount of traffic that could be utilizing that median area to make that U-turn, and what safety, um, issues does that, does that present, right? So, I'm, I'm a little, um, kind of concerned about that myself. I do recall, um, when we were originally looking at, um, this, um, last year, that traffic flow was brought up back then, and we were, we were talking about the medians, and I seem to recall that we talked about there would not be any traffic going out onto one-hundred-and-fifteenth. I could be wrong, um, I don't have any notes from that, but I just, it seems...
We always had this...
You did have...
This component going out.
This component, okay, so I'm...
But again, trying to limit it.
Trying to limit it with the forty-one, okay. Um, okay.
And yeah, Commissioner Schmalki, I'd like to echo your concern, but I think that's a problem up and down the Boulevard. As the county, um, you know, really limits, um, crossing of Coon Rapids Boulevard, what their, I think what their long-range plan is to do is to direct everybody to a signalized intersection, and then at that point, they'll make any necessary U-turns, as opposed to doing it, you know, here.
Okay.
That was one of the reasons why our development partner felt that this was a better residential site than commercial, because the right in, right out limits the, the commercial potential there.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heigler.
Mr. Heigler. Uh, I agree with Chair Schwartz and everybody up here that these are asking for a ton of flexibility, and, uh, the parking, the traffic issues, the tiny little apartments, uh, the setbacks, you know, pretty much everything is, uh, asking for some flexibility. So I don't have an answer to any of these, but it's, it's concerning that there is asking for as much, I realize that you have to have a certain number of units and so forth to make the unit financially viable and so forth, but I think, uh, it's asking for a whole lot.
Well, there's a, there's a couple things with regards to the parking that we can look at. We've worked with, uh, Leslie Bach, who owns Psycho Susie's and Betty Dangerous Country Club in northeast Minneapolis, and, um, we have very restricted, uh, parking available onsite in both of those locations. What she has done is negotiated with local landowners whose businesses close in the evening for overflow parking. Um, the U-Haul being right next door adjacent to us, and then the shopping center that's across the street from them, would potentially allow for some leased stalls if needed, we could certainly negotiate that. I think Commissioner Stevens' question about the, um, property further to the west could alleviate, you know, a portion of that parking, uh, down the road. I think that, frankly, that's something that we could explore, uh, gaining that parcel once the building's up and seeing how it, how it parks, if we start to see a real problem with it. We can, we can work with that property owner, try and expand that, that surface parking at that point. So there is, there is some ways that, you know, from a property management standpoint, it can be addressed. The other piece of that is, I, I think somebody earlier, um, maybe it was a comment one of the neighbors made about, you know, there could be more than one car, you know, per apartment, and I think what the, what the issue, how we control that is that there's one assigned for each apartment, if you want another one, you're paying for it. So that'll reduce the, that'll typically reduce the demand for the second stall from those, from those, um, apartments, so...
What I would add to the discussion of parking is that, um, I think the major concern that I would have from the parking would be a situation where parking would spill out onto neighboring streets.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't view that as a concern for this project, because Coon Rapids Boulevard, you cannot park on. And one-hundred-and-fifteenth, there's no way that you can walk from, when you look at the landscape plan, there's not conceivable people are gonna be walking into the building from that side, there's no act, there's no door into the building, uh, at the end of that drive.
Well, there's an emergency man door out of that.
Yeah, but that's not...
But that's not gonna be encouragement for people to park.
That's not gonna be people walk, come in going from the building through an emergency door.
No.
Um, Pheasant Ridge Drive, which is the nearest street, is a decent hike away.
Mm-hmm.
So if, if this was a situation where there were, it would be easy for people to be parking, for example, on one-hundred-and-fifteenth, I would be more concerned about the parking. As it is, I think people are gonna have to, the, the building's gonna have to live with the parking, and people, if they don't think the parking is sufficient, they just won't rent there, and then you may have to look at acquiring additional property.
That'll be, that'll be part of the market drive on it, essentially, is people who are not necessarily, um, driving, but biking or walking or using the bus there.
Yeah.
So, I think it, we're, we're, we're looking at as a, as a transit encouraged, you know, a transit supportive project versus a car supportive project.
Um, and if, what I would add as to the other issues that we've discussed, um, I'm not troubled by the size, and maybe that's because I did live in, for three years, in, uh, apartments of that size, or actually much smaller, in one case, by the first apartment I ever had, and for a while I was living in a five-hundred-square-foot apartment with, uh, my wife, two cats and a dog. Uh, so, um, and I, you know what, those were good, those, we renewed our lease at the end of year one, so we stuck around. Uh, so that doesn't bother me at all, um, I, I understand why people choose to live in those places, and I, I think that the idea of, um, drawing upon the college and the hospital, uh, for people who might be, uh, wanting that makes some sense. I also think that, uh, this is kind of an exciting project to me, because I think it, uh, helps tie together, uh, two areas that have a potential to drive, um, growth and opportunity in our city, that the hospital, um, and the college, and it does so in a way that, um, eliminates what I view as, if not the number-one blighted, uh, property in the city of Coon Rapids, it's, it's pretty close to the top. I mean, the, the abandoned Pedersen Building has been...
Isor.
An Isor for, uh, a very, very long time, and this building, uh, I think is, uh, a beautiful building, um, and to put it right where, uh, the, you know, to use the planning commission terms, Port Campus Square and Port, uh, the...
Wellness.
Wellness come together, I think is, um, uh, a really just phenomenal opportunity. So, um, the, it's tight on parking, there's no question, um, and that's gonna be something that, uh, the management company and the developer are gonna have to keep a, a close eye on, but it's something that is, I, I view it as their risk, um, because it's not, it's not like we're gonna have a bunch of cars parked out on Coon Rapids Boulevard, you know, they're gonna get towed, uh, and, um...
You know, just, we're not guessing about this either, we've had conversations with both the college and the hospital about this property and their excitement about it being there, so...
And I think it also enables probably, you know, the, they're, they're looking at doing future development in both places and having available housing that meets the demands of, of their populations in the, in the vicinity will encourage them to do that, so...
Okay.
I, I personally think it's a very exciting project. I, it's unconventional for Coon Rapids, that is true, but, um, you know, we, just last week, or last month, uh, approved a project that was unconventional for Coon Rapids up at, uh, the, uh, train station, and I think that, um, this is another project along those lines that I think is, um, uh, exciting, uh, for Coon Rapids.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Is there any other discussion before that?
Opposed. Thank you.
In Planning Case seventeen dash twenty, um, I move that the commission approve the site plan with these use, um, design and dimensional flexibilities with the fifteen conditions and the finding for granting flexibilities listed below. Do you want me to read them, Mr. Harlecker?
No.
No? You don't want them? Okay, so, I know, but I just wanted to make sure that the people out there realize, because you have a lot of flexibility things in here, um, but for the conditions that are stated, um, in the brochure, so...
And the findings there are stated as well.
Yes, and the findings.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion by Stevens, second by Schmalki, is there any discussion?
Vice Chair Stevenson, just to reiterate, um, it's a planning commission approval of the site plan and the dimensional and design flexibility, and it's a recommendation for use flexibility for density and mix of uses.
To the council.
To the council.
To the council, yes.
Is there any discussion to the motion?
Mr. Chair, regardless of what I stated earlier, there are, I do have some concerns, but I do agree that it is, look like a really nice development, and, uh, and I would support it as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission as to the site plan, uh, and as to the, uh, the design flexibility and, it's one other type of flexibility, right?
Dimension.
Dimensional flexibility, and it is a recommendation as to use flexibility to the city council. Uh, the city council will make a final decision on use flexibility on August second. There is an appeal available to the city council as to the decisions that were made by the planning commission on this case. Uh, we will move on to, uh, Planning Case seventeen dash twenty-one, the preliminary plat, Coon Rapids Boulevard Apartments, thirty-five twenty-five to through thirty-five fifty-one, Coon Rapids Boulevard, firm ground architects and engineers. Uh, Mr. Harlecker, you already made a presentation on this issue, I don't know if there's anything else you wanna say this time.
I have nothing more to add, just, I'll just comment.
Okay. Um, I will open a, unless the commission has any questions for Mr. Harlecker as to this item, seeing none, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone wishes to speak as to this item, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commission.
I make a motion. Uh, in Planning Case seventeen dash twenty-one, I move to recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, and since there's just three, I will read them. All comments of the city engineer be addressed. Park dedication in the amount of thirteen-hundred dollars per unit be paid prior to the issuance of the building permit, unless otherwise determined by council. All comments from Anoka County Highway Departments be addressed. Second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Stevens, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is other business current develop. Mr. Harlecker?
Um, Commissioner Stevenson and Vice Chair, um, we got, uh, a Honda dealership on the agenda for next month, and Gateway Commerce Center, um, they'll be before you for site plan for their new dealership facility. Um, we haven't seen any, pardon? Honda.
Is it the Honda? Sutton Honda.
Um, we have not heard from the, uh, we haven't seen any applications yet for the property that Walzer owns, um, and talking with their, uh, architect, um, they're waiting to see what happens with the Honda dealership, um, with respect to, uh, building design. And, uh, you know, each of these car dealerships have very specific, um, formula buildings that they like to use, and, um, they'll have to, uh, modify them in order to comply with, um, the design standards of the Gateway Commerce Center PUD agreement. So they're kinda, they're, they're anxious, they're glad Honda's coming in there, and they're, uh, waiting to see what, what happens with that. Other developments, you've got the, the Amcon project, it'll be back next month, and we've got a home occupation permit for a, uh, dog sitting service, uh, next month. That seems to be a, a growing trend in areas where people like to take their dogs to a local place instead of a big boarding kennel if they're going to wait for a couple days.
Mr. Harlecker, uh, has there been any, this is not squarely in the province of development, but, uh, has there been any discussion of a timetable for the Hanson overpass over the railroad tracks?
I don't know. Mr. Feneles, you...
Uh, Mr. Chair and, yeah, planning commission members, my, my understanding is that, um... Right now, the city and the county are working on the preliminary engineering issues this fall, um, gearing up for what I believe will be a twenty-eighteen project, so, that's the latest that I've heard on it.
Yeah, and they will close Hanson down, it's like they're gonna do half a bridge and then do the other half, um, so that it will be closed down for the period while it's under construction.
If there's, uh, nothing else from the commission, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Stevens, second by, uh, Casey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned.